Know that we took this other agenda item and paused the others, so they don't think we flew through the armory.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you for those that are watching this evening's meeting. We just had a little technical glitch with our broadcast. So we took a moment away from the armory discussion that we were in, and instead we moved to our next item, which was just about a municipal court judge selection process. The council has supported an RFP process with applicants coming, applications coming back to the council. There are still some details to work out about how that process will play out, whether it's in public executive session or other. But we are now returning to our Armory Hall discussion.
We are talking about the facade renderings and the type of intervention that the design team should be looking at with regard to the addition. It sounds like the addition is supported by council. We were talking about the Hopkins facade and the southeast corner also that we were looking to get a little bit of direction on.
I was in the middle of questions.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
You were?
Yeah. Right for that. So the last thing I said was about parking spaces. And then now moving on was, not that you'd put this in here necessarily, but when we talk about community lounge, I was looking for billiards or shuffleboard or that sort of thing. Is that in this design?
That's on the mezzanine level.
It is.
There's that sort of what we've called the community boardroom and then lounge seating and then billiards and shuffleboard to the east side of that mezzanine. We can pop up that floor plan real quickly so you can see that.
Yeah.
Oh, shuffleboards.
Nothing's moving.
Make sure it's proportionate, but I just, yeah, wanted to make sure it was in there.
Jen's computer's frozen now at the moment.
Okay. And then I was just trying to work through these designs to understand where people got food and then had access like outside the Connor Park as far as just like the ease of that goes.
Yeah, so Jen, now if we go back to the main level, I can address that. So there's, there's again the three kitchens and they are generally located along the north side. You can see one that sort of fronts Galena. And then you step back to that next gray box, which sort of meets the wall of the new visitor center. And then the other one is to the far east side. And so the intent would be that in the summer months, the Hopkins Avenue bays three and four open up and create permeability to Hopkins and you can proceed out the parkway to Connor Park or to have a seat in the parkway. Or you could go out the new vestibule along the east facade with a more direct connection to Connor Park.
Very nice. I'm sure we'll get into individual responses for each one of your questions, but I just wanted to signal, I love the work that you guys have done. Tangible results mean the world to me when it comes to spending city dollars and what people can see and experience. And I think the city, the community, tourists alike will get so much out of this in such a positive way that it's just really exciting to me to think about this being completed one day and it being so full of life. So I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. We're excited too.
Thank you. All right. Any other general questions? And then we'll tackle these list of specifics, including the addition and other items. Are, is your, are you frozen?
It just seems to be a different arrow that I need to use right now, so it just, I think I'm good.
So do you want to go to the page that had the five questions that you were targeting this evening?
I'm using my mouse.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, and so I just want to, you know, I had no specific questions for you. I, I just want to say that I think that this has come a long way. I think you've shown a lot of responsiveness to the last round of meetings that we had on this in our work session. I appreciate filling in some of that financial modeling. That really does help. I think that this has come a long way. I do have, I do have a little concern about pushing that envelope about especially the Hopkins facade. The visitor center addition, I thought, looked really good. The Hopkins Avenue facade, I, I would wonder if there was a lighter touch that could be used and still achieve the same goals that you've brought to that side. I, while I personally support the, that prefer, the preferred that we all kind of said that we liked more, I can understand maybe that that's a little too far. And so I'm amenable to, you know, some of the other elements for the divided. If that got us there, I don't know what HP thinks and I don't know what HPC will weigh in with. But it, it looks great, but I do understand how maybe that's a little bit much. And so I do appreciate the work that you've done so far. So guys, number one, I just wanted to get all of you confirmation of schematic programming. There's a, is there a general consensus that you enjoy what's been brought back to us? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
One question for all of us.
Mike? Thank you.
Non-gender bathrooms. Are we all comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if you, if, I don't know if you moved the bathrooms because of a council member's suggestion or not. For me, you know, like it or not, this is a place that is going to be a public bathroom stop for people. Our only other one is over by the park, so this definitely will be used for that function. So for me, it's not about the mixed gender bathrooms, but for me, it was really just about putting them on perhaps on the first floor. It's not a big deal. You travel up and downstairs all the time and it annoys me all the time. So one more place that it annoys me, not a big deal, right? So confirmation of schematic programming, you're hearing general consensus of what you've put forth. I would say once again, that top floor, I still think that there's maybe more opportunity. That stairwell that jumps in the middle of it, you referenced partitioning for separation. But I think in the memo, it also said something about the fact that it would be able to be used as a singular hall. It could be rented out as a single venue kind of thing. So I think that that's great. I think that that's one, that's going to be maybe one of the biggest attractions to this. Depending on the pricing that goes on here, I can, I can see an event a weekend going on up there, which is going to drive revenues and make the operator easier to deliver on some of the other community expectations. So as long as that top floor is able to be really changed and utilized as a hall, I think that's a really great thing. That's all I saw in the schematic programming that was of any concern to me. Confirmation of visitor center addition. At this time, people are looking forward to an addition to the building for the housing of the visitor center?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I do want to add though, as I asked, I'm a little concerned about the loss of parking between Hopkins and the visitor center. And I just holistically want to talk about the parking situation in downtown at some point. And specifically parking for like handicap spots, because that was like an idea of where the visitor center is and just making sure it all works out in that way and we're not just taking away spaces and creating another problem from that. But yes, to the visitor center.
I was always in favor of the visitor center being part and parcel of the attraction of this building. So for me, I, the visitor center could be the addition. It could be inside. I'm okay with either way. When it comes to Sam's concern about parking, you know, continuing to move our community towards pedestrian-friendly dwell space and the like, for me, is, is worth the trade-off of, of losing a few parking spots. I do agree though, that even short-term as well as handicap parking are things that need to be integrated into all of our planning. Support for facade development along Hopkins and Southeast corner. I think you've heard the input here. Most people are really excited about how that plays in these depictions. There is some question and concern about where historic meets modern. And that's both in how it plays for the person that is observing it, but also for respect to the historical elements. Confirmation of public realm approach to Hopkins Avenue and Connor Park. I'm not sure I understand that completely. Is that going along with kind of what you were talking about earlier? Is that that would be the city's charge and that there's no vending basically in that, in those areas?
So it's the parklet, the removal of the parking spaces on Hopkins for pedestrian, pedestrian use, sitting space, garden space, as well as a refresh on Connor Park. I think we'll talk a bit more about the refresh on Connor Park and upcoming budget discussions. I have some design questions from what we've seen, so I don't know quite what we have right now is what we will, would put in a land use application. But it's the general direction of how do we integrate those two spaces? We don't believe Connor Park can stay in its current use and configuration, and there's programmatic impacts to that. So for example, to Saturday Market, things like that, we have not, we've not ventured into. But we see this space becoming very different in how it's used than it's been used in the last 20 years.
Would you like me to clarify our question for in terms of what we're looking for from you?
Yes, please.
I think this, this conversation is maybe some about Councilman Rose's concerns around parking and the loss of parking on, on Hopkins and that connection to Hopkins. It's also about the expansion of the light well to create a better connection between the lower level community space and a future improved Connor Park.
Okay. Comments?
Very supportive of the proposed approach.
Thank you, John.
Yes, I think it makes perfect sense to lengthen dwell time.
Stay.
Just going to add to the whole experience. Fully supportive.
Thanks.
Same. Very supportive.
I love it.
I, yeah, I think this is the direction that we want to go. I, you know, Sarah's last comment though about Saturday market impacts and maybe the potential for continuing some of the integration that's there would be interesting to know how this works with current programming and current usage, not just changing it. And confirm next steps.
So the one thing, I have a question here while Jen's working on her slides is, right? Our, our plans include going ahead and getting that land use application done by the end of this month. Are there things the council, does the council want to see this land use application at the end of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to see that before you file it? That was an important step for you on the lumberyard, that you had one last look at it before we filed it and went through an entitlement process. So completely your call. We have time on the agenda later this year to do that. But that is where some of these questions about parking would be refined as an example in that process, that application.
And I would offer this, the council, if we do bring that back for council, that there might afford us an opportunity for public input. You know?
Yeah, I don't see the harm, but I would hope that us as a council don't tinker too much for the sake of tinkering and more look for that public comment and just solidify what we hopefully believe.
How would this affect timeline?
I mean, there's the potential. It depends on whether we can be ready for the, what was probably the second Monday of December. So I will need the team to get back to us about whether they could be ready for that, for a review, like be at 90, 95% ready. Because they don't want to work over the holidays on this either. And we can come back to you. The worst case would be is, is that we would encourage you to meet on like January 6th, the first Monday of 2025. Don't worry, you already have a council meeting scheduled for January 7th, so, next year. So there, there could be just a little bit of time slip, but I, I think I would prefer having a motion directing me to sign and, and submit the application on behalf of the city from this council before I do it. Just to ensure that there's full clarity on what is being submitted.
Okay, then with that, I think we have support for bringing it back so we can see it and sign off on it. And I would say if we can, depending on how that schedules, I don't necessarily want to have a public hearing if it's not necessary for a public hearing, but perhaps an action item that, and we can signal that will allow for public comment.
Sure, we'll probably present it in a work session format and then have it just as an action item. So we're not doing the full presentation.
Okay.
The same night.
And depending on that scheduling, then maybe we take public comment in the work session instead.
We'll work it out with you, whatever you prefer.
Tori, would you like any feedback from HPC prior to our meeting on that? Or would you like to wait until they're formally roped in during the land use process?
I think we'd probably need to wait till it is in the land use process because they would need, they, they need their meeting scheduled. They need their protocols in place. And so I think the city attorney will probably agree with that.
Yes, they will be a decision-making body at some level. So I think it would be appropriate for them to comment later after you make determination, move forward with an application. You guys are property owners, so you can treat some of this differently. You have gun-aware two hats.
Okay. That was your question? Questions around next steps?
Do, do the steps that we mentioned, the finishing of schematic design, getting the land use application now will do a little bit more.
Slide that has these listed out?
Yes. We'll be working on the land use application. We might have a step before submitting, obviously, just this discussion that we'll be bringing it back to you to basically get your blessing. We have started an RFP and plan to get that ready by end of first quarter, at least getting that responses, or fourth quarter, excuse me. To keep progressing this, we would like to, once schematic design is over, is to start doing design development. And then at the appropriate time, we would start looking at an RFP for an operator again.
Sounds good. Do we have a guess on financing this yet? Have we?
Well, that, that, this is a really important step about this cost estimating, because everything today has been by square foot. And now that we have what we think is, you know, if you pass this resolution tonight, we can start actually looking at some quantities and things that have been based on, that we haven't been able to base on plans. I'll just put it that way.
Okay. So we're still in that position of, we have a couple of different alternatives and we'll get closer to narrowing that down. Advantages and disadvantages as we get a little bit further.
Yeah, I think you, you need to engage that CMA.
Okay.
In my opinion, that, that, I would encourage that to be a high priority for the council so you can start having better cost estimates than what would have had to be ballparks for us as the programming has been fluctuating.
Okay.
So do you need this in the form of a motion to proceed or?
Motion for Resolution 129. If Tori's ready for that.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to do a word or do you want me to do it? I got it open. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 129.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussions. Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution 129?
Counsel Doyle.
Yes.
Counsel Guth.
Yes.
Counsel Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counsel Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, great work, guys.
Yeah. Thank you for turning around the product that you turned around to us. Coming up are, we have two more items and these are resolutions of possible support for county ballot questions. Council members, I want to put something in front of you before we even discuss these. You know, a lot of times with support for different questions, oftentimes a split council support is a mixed message. And I'm wondering if council members would like to consider if there is a 4-1 or 5-0 vote on these to support. If there is a 3-2 or split council, maybe we withhold support. I don't know how that hits any of you guys, but.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
I don't agree either.
Okay.
I, I think if we were to do that tonight, we should do that across all votes.
No, they're different, different votes. This is just for support of different measures, so. All right, this first item is Resolution 130. This is support of county ballot question 1A. Do council members have any questions around 1A or do you know what 1A is? It is support for the housing.
Well, we've been bugging, bugging the county to put some skin in the game and this is it, so.
Yeah, I can't. All right.
Finally listened to Rachel.
You have in front of you a resolution in support of ballot measure 1A. Is there a motion?
I, I'd like to make one comment first, if possible.
Yep.
You know, I'm certainly supportive of, of good housing initiatives. And I think the county is long overdue for something along these lines. But I'm very concerned by the nebulous nature of, of this initiative. They don't have any concrete plans of what to do with this money or how to put it to good use immediately for our community. The, the potential uses are very wide-ranging, everything from housing for the homeless to buy downs within Picking County, which are financially very difficult to achieve. I'm just concerned that it's, they don't have a good plan for this and that's what gives me pause. I really wish they were coming to us with, we need eight and a half million dollars this year to accomplish X, a specific project or a specific partnership or, or something like that. Even if it allowed them to do more, but as a starting point of something to, to accomplish, that would make me much more comfortable and supportive.
Thanks. John?
Yeah, I am aware that the county has the Phillips Curves property under review for employee housing. I don't know if they've settled on a number of units yet or anything like that, but they have plans. And I think this is just a step in supporting them to get this, this ballot measure on the ballot, to collect a tax, to address a huge deficit in housing that we have all throughout the valley. So I will support this 110%.
You can only support it 100%?
I guess I'll lower it to 100%.
Okay, thank you. Sam and then Ward.
I just want to say I agree with both comments in the sense, and wanted to add that this tax does have a sunset clause to it. And I do expect the county to use it in good faith and good judgment, so I will be supporting it tonight as well.
Yeah, and response to Bill's comments, I mean, sales taxes, all these tax measures oftentimes don't have plans. We, we just saw how expensive it is to have plans. They have some stuff, some, the Phillips Curves putting more units there. They, they have some plans, but they don't have any funding, so. In, in as far as the homeless, I brought that, I, I raised up that question at the action meeting. They said probably less than 5% of these funds would be directed in that, in that endeavor. So I, I'll, I'll support this because I think they need the funds to get the plans.
Thank you. I am supportive of this. I went to the county commissioner meeting where they were discussing this ballot question and I pointed out that it is not perfect. But, you know, this is the kind of thing that voters can support and voters can repeal. So I'm supportive of 1A. I think that there is a necessity for their partnership, the county's partnership on a multitude of, of projects. And it doesn't necessarily mean building more, but really strengthening and maintaining what we have as well. I do like how they've kind of called out the fact that their, their main intention here is for critical service workers and the like. That's something that the city program has always struggled with about whether we want to give prioritization and such. And so I think that this may be filling a gap that we don't necessarily hit. So I will, I will be supporting it as well. This is Resolution 130. If anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution Number 130.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution Number 130, please?
Counsel Doyle.
Yes.
Counsel Guth.
No.
Counsel Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counsel Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
Yes. Resolution 130 passes for support of county ballot question 1A with a vote of 4-1. The next item is Resolution Number 131. This is support for county ballot question Number 1C. Do council members know question 1C? Have any questions regarding it?
Just comments.
Okay, we can go with comments then. I'll start with Sam.
Yeah, I'll be supporting ballot question 1C. To me, is the logical choice. We have a wide spectrum of support for 1C. We got Acro, we got so many local pilots, the Picking County Dems, Picking County Republicans, so many former and current elected officials, Dan Blankenship from Rafta, and obviously the five members of the B O C C. To me, so much of the other side's argument lacks any sort of logic and uses hope as a strategy. Essentially a lie at this point to say that we can have a modern airport without FAA funding. Not only that, this ballot question asks to change the home rule charter, which does not make any sense. Plus, it's pretty sad that with the passions involved in this, that two of the three county commissioner races are unopposed and the third one's not even really airport-centric at all. The economic benefit, the safety benefit, and especially the environmental benefit, especially for this council's goals and being environmental stewards. I mean, we got an article in the Aspen Times a few weeks ago from Bill Sterling, John Bennett and Auden Schendler talking about, let's create the greenest airport in America. And I, I just feel like aircraft account for more than 92% of airport emissions. That means the type of aircraft flying into Aspen matters more than anything else. We can have much more fuel-efficient and less pollutant planes. We can get rid of stopovers that create a lot more emissions as well. Fewer than 5% arriving, airport travelers use mass transit. And the new airport terminal will be a mass transit center with FAA funding. Our terminal's not just a terminal, it's a tool for reaching the hearts and minds of hundreds of thousands of influential people each year. 1C is an opportunity to make that happen. And I just really hope that this council is not hypocritical, but rather supports the environmental initiative that this airport does. Otherwise, that'd be incredibly disappointing considering all that we stand for and our goals. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and make some comments right now, because I think some of what you said there is, is a lot of, a lot of propaganda. You're right, 97 or something percent come from the aircraft emissions. And the, the ability to change to new aircraft is not going to have, not going to move the needle on that for some 50 years, if that. You mentioned something about non-stop flights. This is not going to replace any of the, of the connections now. It will just add non-stop flights, so it's not going to be really environmental savings there. I disagree with its positioning as such an environmental gain. The environmental gains that are going to be made out of the airport will be on the ground side, not on the air side. You know, I think that there's a way to get a modern airport done with FAA funding, with a new runway, new terminal, with one, one modification to that, which is to maintain the 95-foot wingspan and. which is to maintain the 95-foot wingspan until the voters, uh, of Picken County lift that, which I could see happening, so. But that's not really the question. This question is really about the authority and, uh, vesting power with the, um, county commissioners. I see 1C as, um, direct opposition to a citizen-initiated referendum, um, and the county already had this power. For me, this is about, um, you know, suppressing a potential vote. There's been a lot of misinformation that's gone out about this, um, you know, it started back when, um, you know, there was no replacement for the CRJ 700 and if we didn't fix this runway and this, this airport, that, that we were not going to have commercial service anymore, and that's just, uh, not true and never was true. Now you've gotten, you've heard other different, uh, promises and threats, but, um, it's really not getting us there. And this question 1C, um, I think the spirit and intent of it, uh, is, is kind of violating the Picken County Home Rule Charter, uh, as well as, as constitutions. I also don't see how, um, there's some things that are contained in the language in 1C that are not associated with airport improvements that are beyond commissioner control, so, I'll be opposing this. I, 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 it's unfortunate that this is on, it shouldn't even have ever gotten to this point, um, and, uh, you know, the, this county question, it just didn't need to be there. They already are the controlling entity out at the airport, and for citizens to petition referendum and put something on, on a ballot, it, just for information and, and input, that does, that has no intention of stopping runway improvements or terminal improvements, yeah, it, this was a disappointment. This whole process, um, around this has been a disappointment, so I can't support, you know, further ridiculous questions around this. So for me, this is not necessarily about the airport, this is really about voters' rights, so anyway. Uh, other comments on 1C? Sure, Bill.
Thanks. Tori, one thing I agree with you on is that it is super awkward and bizarre that, that the question coming out is about reaffirming commissioners' powers rather than a direct question about the airport, which, which would be more appropriate. And would feel better to me, but, but that being said, it really is ultimately about the airport, and, and what the airport question has become is a bizarre proxy fight about potential growth in our community. Uh, and, and this is just the wrong venue to argue about potential growth or, or mitigating growth. This is about a safe, functional, practical airport for our community that's a, a vital part of our community. And, and if you take the growth concerns away from it, logic should prevail, um, and, and it should be recognized that the downside risk of, of trying to, um, insert our desires against the FAA's wishes is, is really asymmetric. Nothing was more powerful for me to hear than, um, what Bill and Dan presented regarding the potential of, of taxiway sterilization when the runway's in operation. That would be pretty devastating to our community economically, functionally, and more. It would, it would really cripple our airport, and that is not, uh, something I'm willing to gamble with, so I am super supportive of 1C in the sense that it represents a yes vote on approving the, the current airport layout plan and moving forward with, um, upgrading our airport as proposed. Thanks.
Thank you. John, any comments?
Yeah. I'll try to keep this short. Um, first of all, I'm glad that, uh, we are not the deciding body on this because it's a very complex issue, um, and I don't know everything that I feel I should know about it. That being said, uh, when we talk about the expansion of the airport and allowing bigger planes, that just says growth to me, and that's why I am not in favor of supporting 1C.
Thanks, John. Ward, comments?
Yeah, my comments, number one, um, you know, whether it's a violation of Home Rule Charter, US Constitution, the state of Colorado, that's all conjecture, and it will, uh, undoubtedly be questioned, uh, regardless of what the outcome of this is. The, um, uh, you know, I, for me, it's always been the elephant in the room is growth. Is this a growth generator? I, uh, the municipalities up and down the valley are the ones that control growth, Basalt, um, Tonnesno Mass Village, Carbondale, um, Picken County, um, those are the entities that control growth, not the airport. I think that larger planes are more fuel efficient and the, um, the Embraer 175, which is a short-term solution, is a, is a break even, it's same engines, doesn't matter. I think, I, I agree with, uh, um, Sam that, uh, direct flights do save energy, um, with a stopover. The suppression of the vote I find is really ironic in that this council, uh, did not trust the voters to approve or to ask the question about the entrance to Aspen. Uh, earlier, uh, Tori said the majority of the community, uh, is stepping away from the preferred alternative. Well, we don't know that because we haven't had a vote. This is, uh, this is too important, uh, everybody in the community, both sides, 200 or 1C, um, agree that we need to rebuild the runway and that we need a new terminal. Those are, those are given, um, no arguments there. It's going to take a long time to, uh, rebuild the runway and it's going to be a stress to our economy while that airport is out of commission for eight to 12 months. For us, the economic studies to me that I find, um, valid indicate that there is not the bonding authority from, uh, the ABO to fund, uh, airport improvements without, uh, federal, uh, grants. I think that the FAA, uh, will not accept an, an ALP that is not, um, in conformity with the runway separation. Um, they've, they've stated that on a number of occasions. I think for the, um, economic sustainability of, of our whole valley, that, uh, we need to do this, so I strongly support 1C.
The economic sustainability of our entire valley rests on this. I just disagree. Anyway, you know, I'm not going to belabor the argument. I think that, um, you know, I've spent a lot of time with this issue, um, 20-something years. For me, it goes back to, um, discuss, uh, discussions in 1995. So, um, my history with this and my, uh, the information that I have, I guess, is, um, you know, a little bit more than maybe others have, so, um, I, you know, I, I accept that. I just think that, uh, you know, not, not as a mayor or council member, but just as a person in this community, um, you know, my responsibility to the community and for what I see best, um, going forward is, is my charge, and that's what I try to do, and I, I think you guys try to do the same thing, so, um, we disagree and that's where we sit. Does somebody want to make a motion for this?
I move that we, we adopt, um, pass Resolution 131 Series of 2024, supporting, uh, the Picken County Ballot Issue 1C.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Further discussion for me is this, is that, um, uh, you know, Bill, there's a, there's a similar situation maybe that's coming up in the city. You know, there's a group of citizens that are looking to pro, potentially put forth a charter change, um, in our next municipal election. This question reflects the same as if that group puts a question on, that this council would then put a question on that negates their question. That, that, that's, that's kind of a parallel for this question, and I don't think you would support that at that time. I don't think I would support that at that time either, you know? I, I, I think it was, um, just a, uh, a, a poor move for, for the county to do a reactionary, question that seeks to undermine a citizen petition, you know? I just, I, I, and I think you probably feel the same way, but not on this one, so. We have a motion and a second, and can we have a roll call vote for the motion, please?
Counselor Doyle?
No.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
No. Thank you very much.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion for adjournment and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. As always, I want to say thank you to Grassroots Television. We appreciate you. We are back with a work session next Monday. Thank you, guys.